So, good evening. I think the session before the last session is always interesting because it's not the last yet, but I think you have exhausted all your energy and attention in multiple sessions. Now, a simple question before we start it in a panel format. How many of you are attending the first panel discussion talking about technology and collaboration? Right? So, very few. To be honest, we have been talking about technology. We have been talking about collaborative canvas from different perspectives. And the world has changed, world has evolved. We keep on discussing the same topic with a different lens, with new learnings. And I'm so fortunate to have a very diverse, you know, panelist speaker sitting with me, who bring in lot of experience from government, from corporate. And all these experiences are from the strategic level, at the program level as well as coming from the ground. Right? You have a panel where people have switched careers from corporate to government, right? And they bring in both kind of expertise over here. Representing Axiom, we have worked in more than seventy-five countries, built almost two thirty-five financial institutions. We could impact almost hundred million lives only last year. If I remove the technology and collaboration, you know, from our efforts, possibly we would not reach there. Now, let's hear from our speakers what's in it. You know, what are their experiences from the topic and the thematic area itself? And first of all, I would request Dr. Sapna, who is coming from the Office of Principal Scientific Advisor. And if you remember the pandemic, and whenever I see her, I can't forget this particular part. Though we have moved on and we are talking about the recovery now. She was a person and sitting at the office who was running a huge campaign where lot of corporates came in and government also collaborated. So, it was the first time when we saw government as a collaborator. She led this entire initiative and now we have seen the success from all the angles. So, my question to you, Dr. Sapna, is that you've been through that phase where it was more of a push and encouragement to collaborate, then the post-pandemic, you're building on top of it, right? Because the entire landscape, the entire canvas, as we are using the word, has changed. So, what are the changes you observe? What are your experiences you would want to share with us?
Thank you. Thanks CSR Box for, I think this is the second consecutive year when the Office of the Principal Scientific Advisor to Government of India and Prime Minister is part of CSR Box and a key partner. And it's, you know, not only because technology is close to heart, but Bahamik has started CSR Box many years ago and we were, I was in National Skill Development Corporation then. So, we know CSR Box and the way they have grown and the way they bring all of you together. So, I think, you know, being on this panel for me is more than just being a panelist in that sense. Regarding your question on how the industries are engaging with the government now, I think the pandemic was a boon when it comes to that particular aspect because of the fact that the industries at that time came forward saying that they have funds, they have infrastructure, some of them said they had, you know, personnel. For instance, we needed artificial intelligence and machine learning personnel for genome sequencing and so on. So, people came with different, you know, variety of offers, saying that these are the offerings that we have and can you do something about it? So, centrally for us, it was quite interesting to get all of this and make sense out of it and quickly manage the pandemic. In addition to that, we had the whole host of startup ecosystem with several innovations. And I remember at least around three-hundred-plus innovations had to be evaluated, had to be, you know, scaled up, piloted, and that's where again industry came forward. So, industry had a huge role to play and as government, we were able to leverage that and centrally manage this as the Office of the PSA. So, that was two years of intense work with the industries, right? Fortunately for us, we made some relationships during that time with all the CSR heads that worked with us, some of the managing directors and some of the leaders of industries. So, we then said that, you know, why do we need to wait for a pandemic? Or why do we have to wait for a crisis? Why don't we work on various other issues and national missions that we anyway need to work on? So, for instance, we have renewable energy, circular economy, water, waste management, agriculture. All of that needs science and technology. So, why don't we work together on that? So, that is the second step that we did in terms of inviting the industries to look at several other areas. And since they had already had a very good experience with us during the pandemic and when they could have a good experience during an emergency, you can well imagine when there is no emergency, what kind of a relationship we could build, right? So, this is what happened, you know, post-pandemic. And today, we have actually fortunately have three-hundred-and-fifty such, you know, projects and organizations working with us and closed the projects in a fruitful manner. We have fifteen centers of excellence across the nation. For instance, we have IIT Palakad which has a sanitation center of excellence which is funded by HDFC Bank. Bill Gates himself had come down and met the PSA and requested for funding in this global center of excellence. We had Toilet Board Coalition which is HUL, USAID, etc. We had IIT Dhawarad which has a renewable energy center of excellence funded by Honeywell, Infineon, Selco Foundation and all of that. ICICI Securities to Terry, IBM, to IIT Madras for Aquamap, Center of Excellence which is for water and so on. So, I can go on and on, but there are several of them, several industries who have come forward and build these centers of excellence where they scout technologies, where they develop the startups, they incubate startups and pilot and scale up the technologies. So, that's how, in a very structured manner, across the nation, we have been working with industries. And mostly, it is the industry's enthusiasm and energy which actually enthuses us in the government to be able to take it to the next levels. So, that's what it is right now.
Thank you, Dr. Sapna, and thanks for reminding us that we should not wait for the pandemic for these collaborations to happen. And thankfully, you have created an entire ecosystem because pre-pandemic days, even identifying that, you know, startups, corporate, government can work together and these are the thematic areas. I think she has highlighted number of initiatives. It was next to impossible. And before I move further, I should also thank Bahamik and CSR Box team because they have been convening these meetings where we can actually brainstorm, maintain that kind of engagement. It was quite fruitful when most of us were, you know, remotely engaging. So, the next question goes to Abhishek, right? And Abhishek has been working on a path-breaking initiative, you know, addressing the digital divide in government schools. And while we were doing the pre-panel discussions, he brought in lot of essential ingredients of a sustainable program, right? How exactly one can actually hit a very relevant problem at the same time, you know, roll it out at scale and be sustainable? So, why don't you share your experiences and the key ingredient as I talked about?
See, I think the beauty of technology is that, you know, what phase you adopt, right? And so, I think for India, the two good things happened that we adopted technology at a very, very niche nation stage and also very latest stage. So, what happened in the banking industry with the core banking, where the whole world still struggled to get a core banking. India did technology first time and every bank become a core banking. The second big thing happened which no country in the world could replicate was the whole Jam Treaty, right? The Janda-Nadan Mobility. I think many of us travel across the world. I think there is no parallel to what, you know, the Indian UPI system has tremendously done. And I think the technology was not aftermath of pandemic. Actually, technology was savior for us for the pandemic. If technology was not there, imagine your life during the pandemic, right? See, we were so comfortable in COVID only because there was a technology. Your delivery, your groceries getting delivered, your medicines are coming your place, you know, everything, right? Imagine if it was just this pandemic could have happened in ninety, like few years before when we didn't have this whole technology. What would have been our life like? And think about the countries who would have suffered the same way. So, I think kudos to the several government initiative. I think, you know, it's also a very, lot of government initiatives was powered by private sectors. Like, we all know who is the creator of Aadhaar and so many of them, right? I think that collaboration has really worked for us. Now, if you look at, everybody says that there are technologies there. Everybody has a smartphone. Like, India is the house of one-point-two billion phones. But, you know, in the rural masses, how many percentage of children actually get an access to any technology devices? I'm not only talking mobile devices. The data says somewhere on less than fifty percent. And the most shockingly data which comes from that, even among the fifty percent of these children who has access of, you know, some kind of a mobile device, seventy percent of them use for entertainment, not for learning. It's not easy. We were, our kids were doing, you know, I remember, you know, children, I mean, my kid was going through this online classes. Even as an adult, how much attention we do for online classes versus the, so I think the, there is no substitute of human interventions in person. Like, if you're doing, I think Bahamik has been doing this event sometime virtually, right? I don't think we could have a this kind of, you know, aura. So, technology is a force multiplier. It is a mode of enabler, as you rightly said, but not a substitute of anything which we really want to make an impact, despite I'm coming from a technology sector. Now, when we design programs, how, what is the beauty of technology? The first beauty of technology is that it is democratized. You know, it doesn't differentiate between a private equity honcho sitting next to me than a CSR person like me. I get the same information what Ashish get or I get. Or anybody gets in rural parts of Bihar or Jharkhand or anywhere else. So, I think the beauty is that the learning is, it's like, it's like an equalizer, right? What UPI access, access a guy who lives in downtown of Gurgaon versus in any village. So, how do we use our projects for a scale and at a low cost? Until unless we think about these two ideas, then the impact won't be there, right? Now, take this example. We all give computer labs. In my opinion, most of the labs are not working after few years, few months of inauguration. Why? Because there nobody else to run that show. We think that somebody will run the show, right? So, when you are building a technology projects for anything, whether it's a digital literacy or a school education or sensitizing seniors for, you know, for, you know, preventing them for financial frauds, which is prevalent, right? I mean, today you see lot of senior people, senior citizens and senior people are getting, you know, cheated by this whole scam which happens online. So, these are the challenges we are facing up, right? So, when you build a technology project, when we build a technology project, we ensure that we have something like a build-operate-transfer model. You cannot just build and transfer, but you have to also operate till it's transferable, right? UPI has not happened, the usability of UPI doesn't happen in just a, you know, matter of few months. It took some time for us to adopt. The second thing which is very, very important is that we need to develop solutions of a scale. What Khan Academy did for a, from a guy sitting, Salman Khan of US, not our Salman Khan. So, you know, what he did was phenomenal, right? Anybody can access content from across the world and everybody learns, whether you are in Ghana or you are in, you know, in Uttarakhand or any other part of the world. So, these are the beauty of technology. Now, yes, definitely during the pandemic, the good part happened that everybody started using technology for the daily life and it has kind of intertwined with our daily life. Now, how do we really make sure that that users converts to learning, making somebody's better life because technology could be boon or bane also, right? And pain also, right? So, it's important for us to have your programs built in a such a fashion where the technology is a boon for your end beneficiary, not just, you know, your pride that, you know, I am giving technology to a third party, right? So, we have a national STEM program and I think Ashish, we were discussing about this, where we are bringing children for twenty states across India, which is right from Assam to Chennai and everywhere in the country we are covering. And our idea is that how do we take STEM to the rural schools, government schools? And we have seen hundred-and-fifty of them finalists came to Pune a month back of after a year-long program. They, so I think we need to take these kind of programs more in the rural, more to the people who probably will not get opportunity like the, in the cities and urban area. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Abhishek. And I think you brought in a very important word we have been hearing for long. Digital Public Infrastructure, DPI. I think G20 commitments, we all are sitting in Delhi. We have heard a lot about this. If you go back and even think of DPI, I think if DPI in isolation would not have worked, right? So, unless you have Aadhaar, the UPI won't function. You need to have EKYC, right? If you don't have a very robust telecom infrastructure internet accessibility, it won't work. So, the learnings possibly we have derived in terms of the program design and Abhishek hinted towards that, that sometimes we design our initiative, pump in lot of money, but we don't think of the OpEx, right? And the initiatives die after some time because there's nobody who can take charge of that. Other important part which, you know, he, you know, talked about is more about the digital divide, right? So, sometimes we try to see each participant from the same lens. So, we all were happily working remotely, our kids were attending schools. But then we started seeing the threats on social media that there's some student, we were like, there's only one mobile phone in the entire family and there are two kids and they're using the mobile phone and they're struggling for internet and all that, right? So, how we can ensure that without waiting for the pandemic to happen and how we can be having more sustainable initiatives? Now, here we, you know, come to Archana, who comes with lot of hands-on experience again. Transitioned from corporate to a government role and she has been an anchor for the CSR initiatives, right? And the first of its kind of social impact group which is formed by a state government. So, Archana, what do you think about the essential ingredients of success and not seeing technology in isolation as an enabler? Because technology also needs the basic infrastructure. I think, and you have been running many initiatives and supporting the partners. Can you just share some thoughts about same?
Thank you, thank you, Anurag. Good evening, everyone. Thank you CSR Box for giving us this platform. I'll dive right in. Like Anurag mentioned, I spent fourteen years in the corporate. I joked that I served my time, you know, worked in Microsoft, Yahoo, HSBC. And then I started my own NGO in 2012, which is completely philanthropic. Five-hundred-plus people all over the world. We would collect clothes, toys, footwear from apartment communities and we would go to slums and distribute them. Three years ago, I transitioned into the government and now I lead CSR for the government of Telangana. It's called TSIG. The team is called TSIG, Telangana Social Impact Group. So, while this entire, you know, the words and the nomenclature that we've been hearing all day and we'll continue to hear tomorrow about technology being an enabler and, you know, the whole collaboration nexus, this is very key, no doubt. But I'm just getting very practical here because I'm one of those people who sort of, I'm sure a lot of people here just roll up their sleeves and get to work, right? So, when you go to the districts of a state, as much as you talk about technology, we're talking about schools in districts that don't, where the children don't have benches to sit on. They're sitting on the floor. They don't have beds to sleep on, dormitories, you know, it's, it's a, it's, I'm sorry to, you know, paint a bit of a grim picture, but let's get our infrastructure, basic infrastructure in place for those children before we talk about, you know, heavy-duty words like technology. Because these kids don't have access to the fundamental building blocks that we in cities take for granted. So, while it's important, yes, technology plays a very, very important role in the scheme of things, I'm of the firm opinion that corporates need to pay attention to the fact that if you want to move the needle, you can't talk, talk about step three when step one is missing, right? So, I went to a school in a district called Jaishankar Dhopalpalli in, in Telangana. I walk into that school, there are about two-hundred-plus girls who are sitting, again, like I said, on the floor. They don't have, for example, electricity. Their electricity connections are not in place. How can we even talk about technology when you can't, you know, when a, when a fan is not working, you know? And they've sent me a quote of ten lakh rupees saying, please, can you get a corporate to help us out, you know? So, so, so I hope this is not chota move, badi baat, like they say. But, but the fact of the matter is that a lot needs to be done on the ground in the districts of a state in order for us to sort of, you know, come to, to more lofty ideals of, of technology. And, and I think, you know, my ask to corporates would be, of course, I get a lot of, so T-SIG has a, has a network of about four-hundred-plus companies and hundred-and-fifty NGOs. So, we are the largest, we have the largest network really of corporates and NGOs in Telangana. And, and while it's important, it's important to sort of have those conversations on technology for sure. But I think my earnest request would be, you know, if you're a corporate, you need to sort of, you, you need to see if the basics are being met. You know, the fundamental, basic fundamental needs are being met before we talk about, about technology and its, its impact on social impact delivery. So, so with that, I hope I've, I've taken a bit of a contrarian view here. But, but this is experience talking. I mean, I'd rather sort of not whitewash the truth, right? So, that's it from me, Anurag. Back to you.
No, perfect, Archana. So, I think you did not contradict, you actually complimented all the initiatives because all of us know that infrastructure will remain a key. And in fact, that is the intent behind the topic we're discussing today, the collaborative canvas. So, there are technology players, there are, you know, there's a government support, there are so many people who are working only on, on the infrastructure. And that's where what Abhishek said made lots of sense that how you can bring in all these ingredients in place. If we have only, say, DPI but no technology support or no infrastructure, it will not work out, right? Now, now the tough task is for Anur, Anuban, right? That because everybody has talked about their learnings and experiences and working in the same space, there's lot many overlaps in learnings and experiences, right? So, what you have to share about your own initiatives and learnings, you also work as part of government a bit, right? You also come with that kind of experience. So, what are your learnings, your experiences? And try to either compliment or contradict Abhishek, Archana and Dr. Sapna.
So, thanks so much, Anurag, for giving me this opportunity. And thanks CSR Box for inviting me to this distinguished panel. I hope I'm audible, yes. It's wonderful to see such a large audience so late in the evening listening to us. So, thanks again to the wonderful audience. So, just to quickly introduce myself, I work for Qualcomm, which is the world's leading wireless technology innovator and the driving force behind the development, launch and expansion of 5G. We just spoke about digital public infrastructure and, you know, the underlying of all the digital public infrastructure is actually internet connectivity. And Qualcomm has pioneered the development of 3G, 4G. And now, of course, 5G is also coming in. So, that's something. I manage the Wireless Reach program for Qualcomm in India and Southeast Asia. And Wireless Reach is Qualcomm's initiative to blend technology with social sector. So, we look at, so we look at kind of, you know, using technology, using connectivity technology in our social sector programs that we, that we deploy. In India, we have been implementing the Wireless Reach program for about sixteen years now. And in, in the last seven years, we actually started a very innovative program, which is called Qualcomm Design in India program, which is not, of course, part of Wireless Reach. And in the Design in India program, what we do is that we work with a number of technology startups to help them integrate technology in their, you know, in their business and, I mean, like, you know, develop new technology products. And this has been really successful and, you know, there's some of these technology startups have gone up to, gone to launch, you know, have gone to expand their business, have gone to, you know, secure funding, have gone to kind of, you know, file for intellectual property patents and they've done very well. So, I just want to kind of, you know, talk about one startup that we have supported, which is actually, you know, which is a startup called Black Frog Technologies, very close to where Dr. Poti ma'am is from, you know, which is from Udupe. So, this is a startup, Black Frog Technologies, which was incubated in the Manipal campus. And they have created an envolio portable refrigerator. So, as all of us know that, you know, and, I mean, you know, I look at COVID, you know, as, I mean, like, it's one of those dark days where, I mean, like, which actually brought all, brought life to a standstill. And so, the portable refrigerator is used, is used for, you know, for any biological transport. I mean, lot of us know that actually, you know, vaccination, we saw that in COVID also. Vaccination has been one of those healthcare, you know, amazing, you know, success stories. Because of vaccination, you know, we have, our life expectancy has gone up. You know, infant mortality has come down, but still more needs to be done. Because, you know, vaccines have to be stored at a certain temperature. Most vaccines, they have to be stored between two to eight degrees and they have to be kept there. One of the issues in India is that actually you take vaccination to the last mile. I mean, lot of us here who work on healthcare, they actually take vaccination to the last mile. And the challenge is, of course, that, you know, if you're going to remote areas, let's say, you know, in the northeast or something, your vaccination, I mean, like, you know, it's at least about two hours walk to the, to the village and then you kind of do the vaccination. So, sometimes in these, you know, in these cool boxes which are used to transport vaccines, the temperatures are not maintained. So, as a result, these, this portable vaccine refrigerator is quite impactful. It maintains the temperature. Also, the thing is, you know, when you actually, lot of times you have unused vaccines and you get back those vaccines. Obviously, if you transport it in cool boxes, the temperature, it's very difficult to maintain those temperatures and, you know, they kind of, you know, they are kind of wasted. So, it leads to wastage of vaccines. And this product has been extremely successful. We have, they have deployed about thousand refrigerators in all states of India. This is something which, you know, we incubated this program through Qualcomm Design in India program and then we provided them more support through the Wireless Reach program. We have another, yeah, I'm coming to the end. So, we have another success story in vaccines itself. I just want to give you a flavor of the programs that we work on. This is, this actually monitors the temperature of vaccines in the refrigerators, you know, in the vaccine refrigerators. And this is a, this is a nonprofit called Next Leaf Analytics. They also use Qualcomm technologies to, to, to track the temperature of vaccines and, you know, the temperature is, then you can see it over a dashboard. And Government of India has actually deployed this at large scale. You know, Government of India, of course, you know, as always, if you want to work at scale, you have to work with the government. I mean, that is something that we all know. Government of India has a very successful program called EVIN, you know, which is tracking of the entire vaccine supply chain. And this organization has deployed about fifteen-thousand vaccine, you know, tracking in India. And it's a global success story. So, these vaccine trackers are being deployed across the globe. So, I just wanted to give you a flavor of the programs that we work on. Thanks so much, Anurag. I'll give you the mic now and maybe.
Oh, perfect, Anuban. And I think thanks for sharing your learnings because we are seeing that marker that the time is about to be over. But I would request Dr. Sapna to just quickly talk about the two flagship initiatives, you know, which are helping in the collaborative canvas we're talking about.
Right. Thank you. So, as everybody's been mentioning that industry has to work with government and vice versa. In fact, Black Frog was one of the organizations that we had initially itself, you know, helped in incubation. STFC Bank, ST Parik Foundation per se had funded them and all of that. So, that was seeding that we did. And we've done that for several, several startups. Some of them, I think, are unicorns today because of the initial support. And that's the difference that the industry CSR can make. So, there are couple of things. One is, you know, people were talking about infrastructure. If it's not there, what is the use of technology? In fact, technology is important because infrastructure is not there. For instance, gamification of STEM education helps you to play games and learn. In, you don't have to even go to school. You learn so much more. Self-assessments and all of that is there. So, because there are so many innovations and there are so many industries, multilaterals, different countries and different organizations from different countries need to work with our startups as well as academic institutes for technology development, research, innovation, etc. We thought of two large initiatives and one of them has got the Dun &amp; Bradstreet Award, which is called the Mancun Platform. You must have seen the videos throughout the year, I mean, throughout the day-to-day. So, this, during this particular year, we launched this last fifteenth of August and we've got several industries. Almost all large companies, large multilaterals, Gates Foundation, Rockefeller Foundation, Welcome Trust, Microsoft, Intel, ITC, Tata's, the hundred Tata companies, they have come together and Tata Innovus is part of this, you know, Mancun Platform. Here, the entire demand section as well as supply section talk to each other. So, the demand section basically puts in the opportunity, saying that we want technology of this. So the demand section basically puts in the opportunities, saying that we want technology of this nature or we want to set up a center of excellence using our CSR fund and so on. So all of you could be this demand section. For instance, Qualcomm can come and say that we have this to offer, we want to do mentoring, we want to fund this, you know, and, and this goes to the supply side. The supply side has almost all IITs, NITs, triple ITs, DRDOs, Ems, ISAs, CSIRs, eighty-five thousand startups, three hundred incubators, everybody, grassroots innovators, everybody connected to science and technology, researchers, innovators, everybody across. Now there are international institutes who are saying that can we be part of Manthan? So we have told them that you can be a part of Manthan by connecting to the Indian institute and coming along with the Indian institute because we would like the capacity building of Indian institutes first of all and the Indian startups. So we are saying, okay, we are happy to do this, but please come with an Indian entity to this platform. So last year we did about two thousand six hundred and ninety crores worth of funding through this platform, though we don't touch funds and the platform does not have a payment gateway, but these opportunities with funding were posted. And the supply from startups as well as academic institutes has, you know, through R&amp;D and innovation and technology development has been done. Seeing the success of Manthan, we also felt that National Research Foundation, which is a large foundation which we are putting up, it's going to be a fifty thousand crores foundation which the government has envisaged. Out of that fourteen thousand crores will be coming from the government. Now people can say, why not fifty percent and why fourteen thousand crores? Because of the fact that the government is already, has set up so many institutes, right? Not only the IITs and IITs, also the tier-three institutes, AICT, state institutes, etc. The faculty members are being paid by the government and all of that. So hence the cap, and also the Capex for research has been already undertaken. So because of that, we felt that fourteen thousand is good and three times that, which is thirty-six thousand in the next five years should be through the private participation. And that's where CSR has a big role. Because you can fund research, you can find innovation. Why? Because it's a multiplier effect. For instance, if you develop a particular technology, not only do you use it for your catchment, it also goes to the nation, it also goes to developing countries. Let me give you a simple example. Infosys came to us and said, we have only twenty-five lakhs and we are in the month of March, which is the last month. So what do we do, how do we spend this? He said, and is it because most of your technology development takes crores? I said, no, twenty-five lakhs, two hundred crores, there is no difference. The idea is to solve a problem. Hence, we built a ventilator with that money and today WHO buys that for African countries, for northeast and so on. So imagine the, you know, the impact that twenty-five lakhs made. That is what we talk about when we say invest in R&amp;D. And almost all developed countries, US, Korea, Japan, China, you name it, all of them have higher industry funding towards R&amp;D through their CSR. That's why I feel that it's the most important thing to do. Thank you.
So thank you. Do we have time to take up at least one or two questions?
We can take one or two, maximum two.
We have, okay, maximum two.
I am really impressed by listening your lectures and whatever you have done during the COVID pandemics. I am a doctor, I have worked in the intensive care in emergency department and the flu clinic also. And in fact, I have lost my father also due to COVID. But one important thing I just want to mention that the technology definitely helped us at that time. But one science, it is not so much prevalent till now, that COVID vaccination was an important issue to save the people. Now, there is a, there is adult immunization, adult vaccination is of immense importance. pneumonia influenza vaccine, if we can give earlier, actually the total health cost of the country can come down. So I think that as you are working on this issue and you can think over it, that whether adult immunization, adult vaccination can be included in our country so that ultimately it helps the common people and it will definitely, it costs the total cost of the health budget of our country.
Oh, great point. So what is your question exactly? So you just, it's a submission or suggestion? Okay, okay, thanks for the suggestion. We can take one more question and please be brief and, and direct, yeah, please.
Hi, I'm Sujata, I'm from Watershed Organization Trust. My question would be to Ms. Archana. As someone who works with an organization who has, that has developed an app to help farmers, it's called Farm Precise. I do come across this idea that I see organizations wanting to use technology to take the rural community away from farming and farming-related activities. That's usually the focus. So what are your views about that? Do you think it's right? Do you have, you notice the same thing that usually the idea is, you know, let's make them engineers or let's, you know, the skill is always the non-agri-based skill and it's not related to agriculture in any way. Is that the long-term solution? Is that the right solution to look at?
Thank you. Sujata, in my experience and because Telangana has thirty-three districts, I live in Hyderabad. Out of the thirty-three districts, I've visited about twelve or thirteen of them. And you're right in saying, this is an observation that I have made as well, that when you go to a district and you talk to, talk to folks there, talk to the people who live there, there's, there's a very strong belief that a better life awaits them in the cities, right? A lot of, a lot of parents there will probably encourage their children to move to the cities in better, in, in search of better prospects. So I think there is a growing awareness amongst folks in the tech space to, to sort of enhance the, the tech piece to enable the, the, you know, villagers or farmers or the agri, the agri segment to, to incentivize them to sort of stay on in the district. So, so there is that, there is that growing segment as well. But having said that, you're right, I mean, when you go to the districts, people want to come to the Hyderabads and the Mumbays and the Delis of the world, you know, because the perception is, vahapay, you know, taraki hogi, people, you know, lives will improve. But it's interesting to sort of have that conversation because like I said, there are enough and more people. In fact, I've met a few people here at the CSR Box Summit who are, who are coming up with solutions for the farming community. So I, I think, I think that's important and I think that's growing and I think it's a good sign. Thanks.
Thanks, Archana.
No, I'm sorry.
Every product and every service has a value chain system, you know? This, when you're talking about technology, can you mention a specific technology which completely addresses the end-to-end of a particular value chain? For example, in Telangana, KTR says form-to-fashion. Madam is working with. What is a technology working in the form-to-fashion? Whether it is fully addressing the needs, the requirements of the system? Like you, you are through the light and the totality, not a specific, you are talking about technology and then what is the impact or not? You know, you first of all, think about what is the need of the synergy required in what area and what kind of value chain system. Apparently you develop the technology, it will be the real addressing the local needs. Thank you.
So I think we need to organize another panel discussion to address a topic with a multiple value chains. We'll have offline conversation around that. We have seen many use cases, many solutions, but I think we have already exceeded time significantly, we will not do that.
Thank you so much.